All right, again nine o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call the game together and start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Good morning.
Next is approval of today's agenda.
Want you to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries next to approval minutes of three twenty-six twenty twenty-five.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated March twenty-six twenty twenty-five.
I will second it.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment.
Motion to approve claims for payment for four two twenty-five.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is consideration approved dental insurance plan. It's up here, I, I still have a few more questions I'd like to dig into.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, um, I had some other questions on the vision as well. So I'm gonna make a motion to table the dental insurance and the vision provider contracts today, Lance.
Okay, I will second it.
Been moved and seconded to table both dental and vision provider dental insurance plan and vision provider. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so on the dental, I still have questions on orthodontics and braces, what the coverages are there? And on the vision, I wanted to verify, uh, local network providers, uh, to try to attempt to make sure that we're using the providers located in the county. So those are my two concerns.
Okay. And I, I was, some of the, uh, caps on the dental was another one I had. Yeah, I have a few other questions on the vision as well.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Taping. Next is consideration for the elastic benefits proposal.
Lance, I'll make a motion to consider to the approval of the all states benefit proposal with a couple caveats, uh, the first being that it wouldn't be a required, uh, benefits session separate from our annual benefits enrollment dates and times. That would be my caveat.
Okay.
And when is that usually?
That'll be sometime in May.
Do, well, I got a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? So when Julie comes around, he could sit in with those and talk to those people.
Yeah, or Denise.
They're Denise, I'm sorry.
Then Julie and, and this, the other gentleman will be at the same time.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is consideration approved resolution twenty-two point five zero eight for abatement of mobile home tax.
So Lance, I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty-two five dash zero eight on the abatement for mobile home tax.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yep, this is for, uh, tax sales certificate for Ronald B. Witt, property tax on parcel four five five four.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor or roll call?
DJ.
Aye.
Aye. Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, I have the same resolution. I think we have to change those, don't we?
Yep, it's twenty-five dash zero nine.
Seven ten.
Seven ten, yep. So I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two five dash zero nine uh, for the parcel one-one-six-eight-six-three-two uh, for mobile home, uh, Pinecrest Mobile Home Park Lot sixty.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
DJ.
Aye.
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 Man.
Aye. Motion carries, next is resolution ten.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two five dash ten. This is for mobile home parcel E C six-zero-one-two-two-B F S K R A located in mobile home, uh, Pinecrest Mobile Home Park Lot twenty-two.
Now, second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
DJ.
Aye.
Man.
Aye.
Man.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is consideration approved request for refund due to clerical error.
Um, etc.
That would be those.
Okay. I thing here and I don't, oh, not paper. Um, okay, I will make a motion to approve the request for refund due to clerical error. Um, according to this, from the attorney, county attorney, supervisors directed county treasurer to refund the taxpayer any tax portion found to have been erroneously, erroneously or illegally paid with interest fees and costs actually paid. Um, shall not be ordered or made unless claimed for refunds presented with the board within two years of the date, so.
And I will second Renee's motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Little bit of background and then, um, you're gonna have to decide how much to refund and the code kind of limits that amount. So these were two adjacent properties and approximately four years ago, um, the northern parcel was sold or transferred to the Gary and Rita Howe family trust due to an error somewhere in the recording process, and I don't mean at the recorder's office, I just mean in our, you know, system, it, those two parcels were joined for tax purposes and the family trust was receiving the tax statements for the southern piece that didn't belong to them and that piece belonged to Mary Hedge. So the trust paid the property tax on both parcels. That amount was, uh, in the, in the written request that was submitted was over seven thousand dollars, but the code, um, kind of shifts the burden to the taxpayer after two years. If they didn't catch it in two years, the county is not obliged to, you know, pay back more than two years. And so, uh, it was finally brought to our attention. And so I, I believe and, and, um, Michelle can correct me, but the amount that was paid erroneously over the last two years came to four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. And then if there's any, whatever the difference is, that was erroneously paid is just gonna get sorted out between property owners, but the county's obligation is only for two years. So the motion would have to cap the refund at four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. So.
Um, we have a motion on the floor, um, a second or just make a second motion to limit the payment, so. Um, well, that's. But it doesn't have the dollar amount, so.
That you want the dollar amount? I, I don't know that you needed the second motion for the dollar amount.
Just amend the motion?
Well, I, I think for, just to make it clear, it would be best if it's amended to include the amount, because the request was for the full amount.
Okay.
And so the way the motion was made could be misunderstood as meaning the whole amount.
Okay.
So it would be amended to
state the maximum.
Four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars?
Correct.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to include the maximum payout of four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars.
I will second Renee's amended motion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor for the amendment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so now we have the dollar amount into the motion. I know Donna has a question out there.
It's my understanding that state law says if you pay three years of taxes, you can claim the property. Wouldn't that be the case here if they've been paid?
That's not our fight, that's not our fight.
But you're talking about a whole different situation. That's a tax though, when the taxes become delinquent and we have registered banners that pay the taxes, that's a whole different situation. This tax was never delinquent.
Oh, okay, thank you, yeah.
Um, I can also say I've been in touch with Mary Hedge and she's prepared after today to pay that forty-five, thirty-three. So the county will be whole and that's
good.
You know, that's the county's business.
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you.
Hmm.
Next is consideration approved utility permit UT twenty-two five zero four for Cornbelt Power Co-op.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve utility permit UT dash twenty-two five dash zero four for Cornbelt Power Co-op.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, so, uh, Cornbelt Power Cooperative is replacing, uh, poles and lines between Hampton and Iowa Falls. Uh, it's, part of the way is, uh, half a section over from highway, State Highway sixty-five and then comes in over off of D fifteen. So it's just updating poles and, and line on a sixty-nine KV.
Hear the discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is consideration to acknowledge sheriff's report of March.
I can wish to acknowledge the receipt of the sheriff's report for March.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. There are no changes statuses and now we have an update for March.
We're good, all right. Uh, give you just an update on, uh, what we've been working on the last several months, so kind of bring you up to speed. So the Iowa Falls Housing Committee met with Iowa State University Extension and Outreach twice as part of the Rural Housing Readiness Assessment Grant that we received. And we formulated an action plan on various housing initiatives that, uh, that we can do to spur some of the workforce housing in the community. So we're waiting to get that final report back from Iowa State at this point. Um, I've been conducting business visits as part of the Business Retention and Expansion Goal and the IFADC Strategic Plan. And thus far I've, uh, visited with thirty-six businesses in Hardin County. Uh, we completed our, our fourth and fifth class in our business workshop series. We partnered with Iowa Valley Community College District to, uh, bring in a, a speaker and, uh, provide lunch and learn sessions to, uh, hard area businesses and we had a great turnout. We had over, averaged over thirty people per session, so we're pretty happy with that. We've got one more session coming up on, uh, artificial intelligence, so if you want to learn about that, you can still sign up. Um, we are working right now with the landowner to secure an option on his ground for a new industrial site in Iowa Falls. Uh, we're currently doing an appraisal of the property to establish a value and, uh, also gathering all of the, uh, uh, utility information as there are, all utilities are adjacent to that site, so. Um, I met with the, uh, Cargill Facility leader Jeff Johnson, uh, after the recent separation of five employees uh, due to Cargill's downsizing, which this had nothing to do with the local profitability of the facility. It was part of a global rightsizing impacting eight thousand employees throughout the company. So, um, all the capital improvement plans are still in place for this Iowa Falls facility and still moving forward, so. Um, we received and responded to a request for information from the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Project Twister. Um, this was a, a chemical company searching for a rail-served greenfield site. This was kind of a accelerated search. They were in a hurry, so certified sites were a priority, so I represented obviously our certified site. Uh, it was a, about a ten million dollar capital investment with eight to ten jobs at about thirty dollars an hour. We've heard nothing back on it, so unfortunately that's the way most of these go. You never hear anything back. Uh, I did also receive a direct inquiry from a company looking to build a data center. They wanted at least a hundred acres. So again, I represented the certified site to them as well. Uh, and I'm working with Midland Power to see if there's even a path forward to the amount of power that they're requesting, so. Uh, I also received a request for information from Iowa Economic Development for a chemical company searching for a fifteen to twenty acre greenfield site. This was project KHIT. Uh, they anticipated fifty to seventy-five employees. Again, haven't heard anything back on that one, so. And then I received, uh, another request for information through Hawaiian Energy. Uh, this was project Butterfly. And they were looking for seventy to a hundred acres to establish an indoor agricultural facility to produce high-quality fruits and vegetables. Uh, they anticipated about fifty new jobs. Um, so I've been working with the Iowa Falls Community Investment Corporation on the sale of two spec homes. And we did, uh, we did, uh, get an offer on the second spec home and we anticipate closing on that in mid-May. Um, I've also been contacted by a company interested in building a twenty-five to forty acre solar array near Iowa Falls. We looked at some different properties, uh, to find a suitable location. The project was dependent upon certain legislation passing legislature and it doesn't appear that that legislature is gonna clear the next funnel, so it's probably a root point. Uh, the Princess Grill and Pizzeria Project is moving in. Uh, this is a renovation of the second floor for two apartments. Uh, there's been a release of funds. They've completed the asbestos testing and, uh, the architect has completed all the finalized bid docs. And so we anticipated going out for bid here within the next couple of weeks, so. Um, we just hope that, uh, what's going on in DC doesn't affect this project, so we hope money still flows through. Uh, Seat Nutrition is a new business that has opened in the scenic crossing strip mall. It's a, uh, Herbalife Energy Drink and Nutrition Store. Um, Yeartime Medical is also building out space in the scenic crossing mall to relocate their business into. They needed the additional space as things were growing. Uh, we did receive two other requests for information on two other projects, uh, through Iowa Economic Development Authority, Projects Kraken and Project Slug. Yep. Both of those projects were looking for some things that we just didn't have, like kind of existing buildings, so, uh, we did not respond to them, but, uh. And, um, I guess finally IFADC is going to initiate a targeted business analysis uh, to determine what type of companies would be good fits for Hardin County. And then, uh, from that, we will do a marketing campaign to specific businesses within a geographical area of the surrounding states looking for companies wanting to grow or establish another facility, so. That's what I've got in question.
I think a lot. Mark, I've got a, a question. Uh, the legislation that would maybe equalize the funding to rural communities instead of Polk Land Johnson.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, those counties, where do you see, in Dallas counties, where, where do you see that going? And do you see that being a good thing for Hardin County and Iowa Falls?
Well, you know, and, uh, some of that has been pushed by, uh, Speaker of the House Grassman Hoover and, 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 uh, some of his caucus, uh, to get more money bundled to rural communities, uh. I, I see it as good, but you know, I also, I'm concerned because our four biggest counties are our major economic drivers for the state of Iowa and we're, uh, you know, uh, I don't, I really don't see that passing. I'd, I'd be surprised, but, uh, I think there's, there's still too much clout in those things.
Yeah, I mean, they, those counties all have like individual lobbyists for their boards of supervisors and so. I just, uh, was wondering and, you know, a lot of these things that have come up, um, the infrastructure doesn't fit the bill a lot of times, whether it's sewer, power, those things, and so when Dallas County has that, just as an example, it's hard to compete against.
Yeah.
Just infrastructure.
Right.
Not a known quality workforce, you know, uh, quantity of workforce and stuff, so thank you, Mark.
Okay. Great.
Well, thank you.
Next I have is public announcements, none?
Lance, I do have some other business, if that's okay.
Nope, I'm sorry, missed that.
You're okay. So it was brought to my attention several times, um, leading up to today that if you operate a side-by-side, please put on, uh, fourteen by fourteen slow-moving vehicle sign, the placard. So, uh, like a Polaris Ranger or where you have two seats like side-by-side.
It's probably a pledge for golf carts too, wouldn't it? I have golf carts to go by my place.
In town, yes.
Yeah, so just, I, I'm not gonna get into the weeds of, uh, it's just a matter of please, you know, go to Norby's, go to Tyson's, go to hardware store and get a slow-moving vehicles sign, please. The other item that was brought up last week that I think is important to address is, uh, the EMS is an essential service and it, I, I've had to, uh, explain to people and, and people have been more than willing to listen. EMS is an essential service. We can declare that, but that doesn't turn on a, a faucet of water and funds. So we can pass that, might be more than happy to pass it, but according to Iowa Code, then you have to form an EMS advisor council. That's different than our current EMS council that we have in place now. That's not saying that some of the people on the EMS council wouldn't be a part of EMS as a central service planning, but from Wright County to Butler County, you can keep going on to the counties that are past this. They've all formulated this EMS advisor council with some EMS providers, uh, some local leaders, taxpayers. It's been kind of, uh, a mixed bunch of people that get together. They figure out number one, what do they want for deliverables? So in Hardin County, do you want for ALS, Advanced Life Support Units on-call twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, or do you want two ALS, two basic, where are they gonna be stationed? All that. The logistics and the operations need to be looked at and everything, all those expenses need to be put into one big number and that number then would come back to us with ballot language that the people of Hardin County would then vote on. Do you want to pay for EMS service? And our job is to facilitate the ballot referendum. And so, um, I had an email from one constituent here in Eldora last night that, uh, asked about that, and so I think it's important to explain what that really looks like. It's not a matter of the three of us passing something and the funding automatically comes out. And, uh, so if that's the desire and there's a, a strong commitment to EMS as a central service and not saying yea or nay from my perspective, but if the people want to vote on that, the best time to get the best cross-section of voters for the next time would be this fall when there is a city and school election. Um, so that would mean that this EMS council as advisory board by Iowa Code probably should start meeting sooner than later to get numbers and deliverables so that if there is interest in a ballot issue, that it could then potentially be put on this fall. That information needs to be provided sooner than later, so, um, it, it's my desire to facilitate that. I just need, I think, I can't speak for you guys, but we just need what the number is and what people are going to get for their dollars. And if they want really high-end services, it's gonna cost more. If they want middle of the road, it's gonna cost one amount. So I just wanted to clarify that, that, uh, that I have no problem passing, uh, resolution naming EMS as an essential service in Hardin County. But what does that really mean? So, thank you.
How would you propose they begin this and who would they contact to start?
Well, I think they, whomever, I would prefer the EMS leaders in the county solicit assistance from other community members and start meeting and figuring out what they want, what they don't want. How does that look? Does that mean every EMS service in the county remains the way they are? We just fund it one way, or does that mean, uh, county-wide ambulance service? But I don't know what it looks like, because Iowa Code doesn't designate what has to be there. It just, what, how the process works. Thomas, do you want to add something? Come on.
That's exactly right. They have to decide what, I mean, number one, the EMS services have to figure out, and we've had meetings over the last two years.
Hmm.
And they've gone nowhere because we have nobody trying to figure out what they really can share and what they can do together, so. But they've gotta get something. If they, if they really want to go through, it's only you guys passed the resolution. You don't develop the committee, you don't make the people decide what they want for services.
Yeah.
And it's really the people that they decide, need to decide what the service looks like, not the elected officials saying what that is like. The people need to know what they are looking at.
Yep. Thank you, Thomas.
Is there any other business?
Taylor.
Taylor.
Morning, Taylor.
Howdy, talking about bridges. Okay, later today, we'll be closing the one just for today on the East City Limits Iowa Falls by the Priestess Plan, um. That's being designed by an outside firm. The bedrock is very close to the surface, so we need to do some additional tests on that. They're, they're today, yesterday and today doing it too, but today they'll be setting up on the current bridge, drilling through the bridge deck, so we're gonna close that for the day. So that is a truck route, so trucks will be going through the middle of Iowa Falls for today, but that's the way it goes sometimes. And then, uh, Marshall, we share one road with Marshall County and it has a bridge and, uh, they got closed last week.
Last week.
Yeah, last week, so I met with Paul and Bruce and, uh, we're in discussions about what to do about that, so. Yep, of course, our one bridge there, but, yeah. Uh, you know our situation, like we're, we need to, we need to replace three a year to stay on top, but we only get enough money to do one a year, so, you know, our bridge system is slowly dying and I don't know, it's the Oregon Trail and people have to start fording the rivers before long again, but yeah, that's kind of how it goes.
Or Dukes of Hens.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we don't have as much money as we did in the seventies and that's just life.
Do we have very many bridges in the county that could be turned into, I mean, just go with a culvert? I mean, are there many of those left that we could convert when they're, when necessary?
So I did a lot of them and I'm glad I did it when I did, so. It was around twenty-eight, twenty-one, Joe Biden changed the definition of waters of the United States. So it used to be that would be your major streams, like here in our county, it was the Iowa River, the Tipton, the South Fork, it was a good-sized body of water. Like, you could, it was harder to do it on those because you need to, you're hurting the stream bed, so you had to go through process. Well, Joe Biden changed the definition. Now, I'm sure it wasn't him, he just signed the bill. Somebody came up with, so now any form of water is considered a water of the United States, so now any stream that I want to do it to, we would have to, uh, purchase stream bed mitigation. And it costs you thousands of extra dollars on your project. So at the moment, no. But luckily we did most of them, you know, and like our big streams, we can't, because then it starts the culvert, you're pouring so much concrete, there's less concrete in the bridge. So you know, you kind of run the money, but there's still a couple that I would like to do, and so now I'm kind of holding off. Will they change the definition again? I don't know, because they've gotten a lot of pushback on it. But, yep.
Even now.
Uh-huh. If I can, I would, let's put it that way, yep.
Anything else for us?
They're currently looking at our bridges, so I hope we don't have any closes this year. I don't anticipate it, but the closest one is on our list. We're gonna let it in August, so if they do close it, it'll be closed for less than a year, but.
Good, all right, thank you. You bet. Any other business, Michelle?
Uh, I just have.
Uh, I just have an announcement. The treasurer's office will be closed tomorrow. Uh, we have our district uh all stop training.
Yes, any other business? Mike, I'll get you a public comment. So. Like, like, hang on a second.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'll wait till public comment before I put you in. Other business, yeah, I'll let you in.
So I came today for a drainage district, which is follows, but I was shocked to find that the courthouse. Does not have an ADA compliant bathroom.
We do. It's up on the third floor.
Yeah, tried to get my wheelchair through that door.
Okay.
Of the work.
On the third floor, even?
On the third floor, it doesn't?
No.
Okay.
And the men's restroom down here, I I didn't even look. I could see you have.
That ramp?
No, it's not.
That's not, that's not accessible.
That's not gonna be there. He's tucked the room above it, I'm curious. So fortunately, the custodian led me to a hall closet on the first floor that. I was able to get into.
Okay.
Um, you should fix that problem.
I didn't know the third floor wasn't accessible.
When we had the insurance people and stuff, I thought they said that the third floor one was accommodating, so.
It's, it's not, the door's not wide.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm usually pretty good at navigating doors, but this one isn't even close.
Okay, well, we'll get David to see what remedies we can have.
Yeah.
So I apologize.
Anything else?
Check the windows at the same time.
Okay, any other public comments on here yet? None? Okay, I can go for a German then. Oh, Polly.
Um, why couldn't we maybe to save money? Um, do the women's bathroom over here and make that the men's? So that would be more accessible and make the men's, the women's bathroom.
I would have the same problem.
Yeah.
You have the same problem.
Yeah, yeah, you would with women, yeah.
But thank you.
Male and female accessible, wow. Or you and sex.
Yeah, just for wheelchairs.
Yep, which we could look at on the main floor.
Yeah. Yeah, talk today.
The only problem then is keeping everybody else out.
Yep. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I can ask for a German.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries for a German.